It's free of charge.
So the space that we're standing in now was a garage space with garage doors and two places. So we designed a dance room that you see here, a fitness room, a recording studio, and a locker room with showers.
It's a phenomenal new opportunity for the young people that New Directions for Youth serves to get exposure to the arts and to music, to fitness. They have a robotics program upstairs. There's so many great opportunities for these young people that this facility will make happen.
It really offers a lot of different ways that they can help address the whole child and the whole family and find ways to kind of break patterns that kids sometimes find themselves in.
They helped me in a way that I'm pretty sure no one else could have helped me because I had family come up to me and try to help me about my money issues and it just never helped. But New Directions for Youth, I had people talking to me saying, like, really getting to my end to my head, saying, if you don't save up your money, then how are you going to live, you know?
The New Directions leadership saw this vision to reality, and this is really going to be able to serve thousands of young people now and change lives.
They really do amazing things with setting kids that were on a course that potentially would lead to jail or incarceration, really turning lives around.
It's never too late to change. It's never too late to change your ways. There's always options out there for you. You've just got to look for them.
It's not every day you get to see what goes on backstage at the Oscars, right? Well, come along as we take you on an exclusive tour with the brothers and sisters of IATSE Local 33.
We're here at the Oscars. How cool is that? The set, it's amazing. The props, everything about it is so cool, but I can't show you any of it. We're here with Local 33 to give you a behind-the-scenes look. Check it out.
It's Oscar week in Los Angeles. Los Angeles is the best place in the world for a major event like this, and quite frankly, it's based on something very simple: experience.
Local 33 is your main labor support here at the Oscars. We've been doing this job for 50-plus years. We can't thank the Academy enough and the city of Los Angeles for keeping this event here in Los Angeles.
Local 33 and all of the other unions that are part of this massive production and this glamorous production, we all work together as a team to get it done, no matter what. As they say, the show must go on. It broadcasts live at 5 o'clock on Sunday, so, you know, no matter what, it has to happen.
Our office works hand-in-hand with all of the relevant unions that do this work that keeps middle-class families thriving here in California.
I've been with Local 33 for 44 years. I've worked hard. I've worked long hours, but I will retire in three years, and I will be smiling for the rest of my life.
We look out for one another. We protect each other, and we actually work as a family.
I like to think of our men and women as Swiss Army knives. They have the tool for everything to have your show and your production successful. Come show night, there'll be closer to 200 stage technicians on show night, and we will also have approximately 125 more stage technicians out on Hollywood Boulevard attending the red carpet and making sure that's a successful event as well.
For the show, I hand out the trophies.
We are the stewards of the Oscar trophies themselves, which is very interesting.
I register the serial numbers with them, and then they go out.
We're just the best place to be for the entire industry because we are the industry.
It's a modern exhibition that's steeped in tradition. Rashia Goel shows us a new exhibit at the Chinese-American Museum, where you'll be seeing things in a whole new light.
What you may see through your eyes may be different from what I see, but we are all seeing featured pieces of Lightscapes, an innovative light-based exhibition that blends traditional Chinese landscape paintings with new technologies, and it's at the Chinese-American Museum.
I think even with the traditional paintings, they were meant to be very sensory-producing. This one, though, really hits you in the face as our two artists interpreted the experience of landscape painting.
Lightscapes features works from Taiwan-born Nick Dong and Woo Chi Sung. Chi Sung transforms daily objects and phenomena into poetic imagery, while Dong's goal is to engage audiences with an immersive experience, and this is one I enjoyed stepping into.
This exhibition is meant to be experienced individually. Some of the themes include self-reflection, meditation, and serenity. As you can tell from the looks of this place and even hear the sounds, it is definitely very peaceful, and all I can say is, well, I'm in a blissful place.
And these pieces here are actually suspended in the air as they move with motion sensors.
They both have this sense that not only should art be current, but they should be open for everyone to enjoy and to interpret on their own. And I think what we're seeing in their products now is how they feel art should be.
Lightscapes was organized by the Chinese-American Museum in partnership with the Ministry of Culture, Republic of China, and the Taiwan Academy in Los Angeles. And if you haven't been to the Chinese-American Museum, it's worth visiting.
We're more of the experiences of the people who stayed here when the Chinese Exclusion Act was legislated that kept Chinese for decades out of the United States. And so the museum was to talk about and educate the general public about that aspect of American history, of California history, and about L.A. history.
Lightscapes exhibition will run through November 10th.
Admission is free. For more information on the exhibit and museum, you can go to the museum's website at camla.org. Deciding where to go on your next vacation isn't as easy as it sounds. That's why thousands of travelers flock to the Travel and Adventure Show at the L.A. Convention Center to get ideas, tips, and inspiration for their next trip, and there was plenty to choose from.
So Travel and Adventure Show is the first stop you need to make on your next vacation because you're going to explore the whole entire world here all under one roof. You're going to meet tons of destinations that are not on your bucket list, and you're going to find new ones that you may have never thought of visiting before. We have over 4,000 destination experts who are on hand to help you find, plan, book, and personalize your next trip at a price you're not going to find anywhere else.
We come to the travel show every year just to see what's new and what people are offering, and it's fun for us because we live in L.A.
We're looking at different kinds of travel, actually. We're thinking about full-time RV travel, and we're just kind of trying to figure out what's out there for us, and we thought, hey, maybe we can find something here.
For us in Los Angeles, this is the gateway to the Cook Islands. This is a gateway to go into a destination where you're flying nonstop to a totally non-commercialized destination. And for us to showcase our culture here, it's important. We bring our string band, we bring our dancers from the Cook Islands, give us the opportunity to showcase our culture, showcase our destination.
We've been in L.A. for 14 years now, and 2020 is going to be our 15th anniversary. We have a big party, so make sure to come see us in 2020.
We'd be crazy to try and review all 40-plus food stalls in downtown's popular Grand Central Market, so we'll pick a couple. While giving a taste of what the new owners have in store, Gil Reyes has more.
They say Los Angeles is the land of the beautiful people, and though the entertainment industry is definitely a big part of that, the real reason for L.A.'s beauty is the diversity of its people. So many different types of beautiful people tasting so many different types of beautiful and tasty cuisines. And if you're talking about diverse food options, then you have to be talking about downtown L.A.'s Grand Central Market.
No place in Los Angeles has this many cultural food options under one roof. Downtown's Grand Central Market is home to some 40 vendors and counting, including Wexler's Deli.
Bagels and smoked fish, grape pastrami and corned beef sandwiches, and it's one of the things that we actually love about Jewish delis is it's one of the cuisines in America that sort of transcended its roots of just-for-Jewish people and is actually one of those great American cuisines.
Co-owner Michael Wexler and his crew take pride in their must-try pastrami sandwich, the MacArthur Park, and take pride in being part of this ever-changing melting pot of a market.
It's a hodgepodge of the new L.A., and I think a lot of what L.A. wants to be and the current conversation in L.A. of, you know, what's great about our neighborhoods? What do we want our communal spaces to be? How do we want to reflect our culture in our shared spaces?
Looking at what a lot of the needs and wants are from a consumer perspective, looking at the flow of foot traffic.
Creative director Aaron Mavion tells us what the market's new owners have in store. Langdon Street Capital bought out longtime owners, the Yellen family, about a year ago.
So the stall behind me, for example, is one that isn't being used right now, but it gives us the opportunity to, at times, do short-term leasing, so to bring in a pop-up per se. We want to take into consideration people who have a great story to tell that are connected to Los Angeles, that have an entrepreneurial spirit.
Opening in Grand Central Market this month is La Frutaria, selling exotic Mexican fruit salads and shakes. After 102 years in downtown, the market is also seeking historic designation from the city while maintaining its immigrant vibe.
My mom came from El Salvador, so she fled the Civil War.
Paul Serrano's family fled war-torn El Salvador to open Sarita's Papusaria in 1998. We recommend the Revuelta, a papuza made of pork, beans, and cheese, but of course, that's just one option in L.A.'s diverse Grand Central Market.
You can enjoy papusas, you can go enjoy sticky rice.
Barbecue over there, horse thief, too. You got egg scrub right here in the front, you know, you got every, you can choose whatever you want. It's great.
The market has a few spaces available for vendors who make a good fit. For leasing info, log onto grandcentralmarket.com. Plenty of puppets, puppeteers, and kids were on hand for the 5th Annual Bob Baker Day held at L.A. State Historic Park. It was a celebration of a man whose legacy continues to bring so much joy to the community.
Today's the Bob Baker celebration, and it's a really lovely place to get to come and hang out with a bunch of puppets and meet new friends.
It's been a full-on, day-on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
I love puppets. In fact, my mom would go to Mexico and get me the Mexican puppets, and they were hanging all over my room, so I've always really liked them, and I'm glad my kids like it, too.
In a lot of cases, this is a child's first theatrical experience, kind of seeing a show, seeing song and dance. It's a gateway to the whole world of culture and communication and theater.
Well, Bob Baker is a fixture on the L.A. scene on top of just the artistry of puppetry and the beauty and the fun and the joy that it brings everybody. Perpetuating that history and celebrating L.A. history is super important to us. It's a reflection of L.A. It's a cross-section of all socioeconomic backgrounds and ethnic backgrounds are representative of Los Angeles.
I absolutely want to limit screen time and devices, and this just opens our eyes, makes the world seem bright and magical.
Illegal pot shops in L.A. may soon be going dark. A new temporary housing shelter is approved, and a local business is recognized for helping green the environment. All this and CityBee.
L.A. City Councilwomen Nuri Martinez and Monica Rodriguez are ready to flip the switch and cut off utilities to L.A. marijuana dispensaries operating without a license. The city council approved the new ordinance by a 13-to-0 vote. Once enacted, hundreds of illegal pot shops will literally go dark. In another unanimous vote, the L.A. City Council approved Councilmember Jose Wezar's motion for an urgently needed temporary homeless shelter. Funded by Measure H funds, the motion will provide housing and emergency services for 115 homeless residents near Paloma Street in downtown Los Angeles. And moving toward a greener L.A., the city of L.A. and L.A. Sanitation honor downtown L.A. Auto Group's six dealerships with Gold Star Environmental Certification. Since partnering with Recicla, the dealerships have reduced their landfill waste by a whopping 73%.
It's off the charts for someone this early and this quickly.
L.A.'s Chinatown lit up in a dazzling display of fireworks, ushering in the 41st Annual Firecracker Run and Bike Ride, one of the largest and longest-running Chinese New Year charity runs in the nation.
Happy New Year!
It's the 41st annual of the Chinatown Firecracker Event. You got folks who are going to do 41 miles today all the way to Sierra Madre and come back here to the heart of Los Angeles, right here in Chinatown. Three, two, one, go!
I'm doing the 40 miles for the first time. Good way to start the Chinese New Year. Here we go!
It's important because proceeds from this event go back into the community.
Castle Arlo Elementary School, Solano Elementary School, eating around the benefits, the people who live and work in Chinatown is a great thing.
Thank you all for coming out to celebrate the year of the New Year.
To bring Los Angeles together. When we do that, we become stronger as a city and as a state.
Come dressed as your favorite Disney character for a Harry Potter crossover event. Check out a new exhibit honoring a prolific Black composer, and enjoy a panel discussion on African-American contributions in L.A. All this and things to do.
Halloween comes early this year at the Walt's Wizarding World's 2nd Annual Cosplay Crossover Event. Come dressed as your favorite Disney character as if they've lived in the realm of Harry Potter. All crossovers involving Disney properties are welcome. Marvel, Star Wars, Pixar, you name it. Mash up your favorite character costumes at Walt's Wizarding World's 2nd Annual Cosplay Crossover Event, happening Saturday, March 9th, beginning at 10 a.m. The event takes place at Universal Studios Hollywood 100 Universal City Plaza. For more details, check out facebook.com/events. The William Grant Still Art Center is set to unveil their 11th Annual African-American Composer's Exhibition. This year's program is entitled "Music is Art, Music is Philosophy, Music is History: The Legacy of Dr. William Grant Still." This exhibition will be in partnership with the Los Angeles Philharmonic. Get swept up in the symphonies and legacy of William Grant Still at the William Grant Still Art Center. The opening reception happens Saturday, March 16th. For more details, call 323-734-1165. The Los Angeles Public Library invites you to the March edition of L.A. Made, a cultural series featuring free performances and conversations with local entertainers at libraries throughout the city. This month's program is entitled "Black Angelino Trailblazer Families." L.A. Made is happening Sunday, March 10th, beginning at 2 p.m. in the Mark Taper Auditorium of the Central Library. For ticket information, visit lapl.org/lamade. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umayma Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. Today is Tuesday, March 5th. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you call a roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Cidio, Herastas, and Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves. Corretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves. Rue seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Why don't we, let's be led today by Mr. Price in our flag salute.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, in the name of God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items seven and 24 to March 19th.
So ordered. Continue.
Items one through eight are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
There are cards on items one, two, three, and eight.
Okay, let's hold those items and let us vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Continue, please.
Items nine through 23 are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 14.
Let's hold item 14. Mr. Bonin.
Just for a moment.
Twenty-three will hold as well. Mr. Krikorian.
All right, number 14, please.
Fourteen for Mr. Krikorian. And let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
Items 24 through 29 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Uh, there is a card on item 28.
Let's hold 28. And let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 30 through 32 are items scheduled for closed session and public hearings have been held for those items.
Okay, let me defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 30 through 32 have all been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. All of those are settlements that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, why don't you read those items and let's see if we can just move forward with the vote.
On item 30, in the case entitled Ryan Atkins et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $2,250,000 in settlement. For item 31, in the case entitled Helen Langley et al. versus the City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $1,350,000 in settlement. And finally, for item 32, in the case entitled Jane Doe versus Luis Valenzuela et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $1,975,000 in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President?
Uh, let me, I didn't hear that, Mr... If we can change Mr. Buscaino's vote on item 30 from a yes to a no. All right. We're where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, this takes council back to items called special or general public comment?
Let's start off with Ms. McAllister. Please come forward. Oh, I see you. You have items 1A through 1G, and then you have items 24 and 28. Your general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you in church. Last week, I think it was, you were in church. Good to see you.
All right.
I didn't know you believed in God, but I'm happy to know that. Okay, now, number 24. Number 24, Mr. President, you guys keep putting these items on the agendas, but you're still not building any housing. And I see you fixing up properties now. It's been two, three years. You know, this is a big problem we have. This homeless problem, number 24, and I think these properties I see here, about eight of them, I'm going to keep track of them to see when you're going to move in some African-Americans. And, Mr. President, can you look into the fact that when African-Americans become homeless, they go to the social services agencies and they're sent to Skid Row? No ifs, ands, buts about it. That's why we have 20,000 in Skid Row. That's discrimination. And I'm glad that you put back on the agenda the properties that have liens on them. So I'm glad to see them back. We can pray for those people, and hopefully, they won't get put out on the street. Also, Mr. President, I've been driving around some of these properties that have liens and I see African-Americans living in them. So we want to find out how many illegal aliens are living in our affordable housing and get them out of there and get them out of this country. Now, this panel, this council is a Democrat and the mayor is a Democrat. You're really making the Democratic Party look pretty bad. I myself, I'm an independent. I vote on your track record. I vote every two to four years. If you're not doing your job, you don't get my vote. I don't care what you are. Okay, now, number 20, number 28 here, that's about this motion to restructure the Fame Housing Corporation, give them some more money. That's okay, as long as they're building affordable housing, that's what we need. We need you guys to get up off that 1.2 billion and start investing in the money that you told the property owners they were getting when you asked them to let, allow you to increase their taxes. You said, "Can we increase your taxes so that we can build affordable housing?" And they said, "Yes," but I don't see any affordable housing being built. And, Mr. President, I'm also concerned about why these homeless shelters are taking the welfare checks of the African-Americans who live in the shelters. Yes, they're taking their money. That's why they want shelters. The Askanazims, they run these shelters. That's why they don't want the housing. They're not going to make any money off affordable housing. They make money when those African-Americans get in those shelters and they make them, give them their checks every month. Okay? We need to look into that. So when they get put out on the street six months later, they don't have any money. They don't have money even put down on an apartment. We got to find out why you're allowing them to take their money. Now, this is all under LASSA. LASSA should have something to say about this, and LASSA is allowing this. You shouldn't be taking a dime from the homeless. That money has been given to this city by the government, and they shouldn't have to pay one penny to sleep and eat in those homeless shelters.
Thank you. Let's give her her general public comment minute.
Mr. President, this is not, you won't, excuse me, can I have my mic and my time back, please? Mr. President, this is...
Give her her time, wait, wait, wait. Give her her time back.
Mr. President, you won't find this on the news, but the reason why California is not getting this advantage of all these companies moving back to the United States is because over 10,000 companies have moved out of California in the last, since you declared this sanctuary city stuff, last four years. Carl's Jr., they've moved their headquarters to Tennessee. Toyota was here, they moved to Texas. Dallas, Jacobs Engineering, worth 8.3 billion, they moved out of California. Nissan's headquarters moved out of California. Occidental Petroleum, they moved. Chevron. See, they got, they're not telling, this is just a few. They're not telling us on the media what this sanctuary city stuff has done to these corporations. First of all, they were making the corporations disobey federal laws on immigration, they were overtaxing them, and they're getting out of here. So we're not going to see the kind of jobs that Americans are seeing elsewhere. And people, over 142,000 moved out of California, people in 2018. I've got the facts. Go on the web and look it up.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Which church? City?
I'm not going to tell you. I don't want everybody...
Because I want to look for you.
I don't want anybody coming there looking for me.
I'm going to come there and look. I think I narrowed it down to two.
It's one of them.
Okay. So anyway, next time if you see me, make sure you speak.
Come bring a black agenda. Don't talk about your grandparents and all that. We want a black agenda.
All righty. I will look for you. Okay, let's, Mr. Wright, Daniel Wright, item, he gets two minutes, item three, and general public comment.
Okay, so on...
Oh, this is the issue you talked to me about, so...
So, so members, item number three is a fair hearing item, so we're going to give the appellant and the applicant up to five minutes each. The members should be giving heightened attention to the speaker, either at the monitor, at the front of your desk, or at the podium, please.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Mr. Wright? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'm a little unclear. Are you treating me as a multi-item speaker?
No, we're treating you as an appellate or an applete, so please, it's...
So has this item been called?
Yes.
Yes, it was just called.
Called item three, called you. You have five minutes. I tell you what, Mr. Wright, you want me to give you a few minutes to kind of noodle on this? I can call up some other public...
That's fine, because I guess I'm a little surprised. I didn't hear it called, so yes, thank you.
Okay, so why don't, I'll just prepare and I'll call you in a little bit.
Thank you.
Elle Farmer? Elle, you've got a minute on this item and then your general public comment.
Good morning, council members. For this, I would just like to direct your attention to the numerous comments from well over 100 residents on the record. Now, in the record, should be before you, 100 letters, over a dozen land use appellants and sequoia appellants, residents who are objecting to this nine-project hotel and entertainment district that is being constructed in Councilmember O'Farrell's district with totally inadequate oversight from the planning department, a total derogation of their duty to conduct a cumulative environmental impact report for this massive, over 350,000 square foot, 700 hotel, 700-plus hotel room, multiple-bar project that is happening in Councilmember O'Farrell's district. Over 100 of these letters are in from residents. There have been multiple commenters, multiple appellants, and I just want to draw your attention to the fact that this project is facing massive community opposition.
Thank, let's give him his one minute.
So this project is facing massive community opposition, and this council needs to be aware of the fact that the planning department is not doing its due diligence on these projects on Selma and Wilcox, in a very small area. There is a whole entertainment district being constructed, and it seems like it's happening right under the noses of the council, and we want to make you aware of this fact. It is, it is not being done correctly. A full environmental impact report must be done for all of these projects, which have been illegally and improperly parted out and piecemealed into different, smaller projects to mask their cumulative impacts. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't you, let's take up item one, let's vote on that, then I'm going to get some more general public comment.
And on item one, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1B, C, D, F, and J be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full, and that items 1A, E, G, H, and I be confirmed at the following reduced amounts. 1A, $759.27. 1E, $4,108.91. 1G, $4,206.29. 1H, $3,070.69. And finally, 1I, $1,284.56.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item, item number one. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Okay, let me get Sheri, is it Adair? Selena Inouye, Lynn Lyman, Fannie Guzman, Gabriel Guzman, please come forward.
Yes? Hello, my name is Sheri Adair. I'm from Windland, West Los Angeles Neighborhood Network. I'm a stakeholder in Mar Vista. My neighborhood has turned from a sleepy little town into highways, on our little narrow streets with parked cars on either side, people traveling both directions. These streets can't support the traffic. This road diet has decreased our quality of life and hurt our community. Our councilman, Mr. Bonin, has divided our community while telling us that there would be a public process. He has not. How can the city make this project permanent without an environmental review to protect the citizens? How can Mr. Bonin and the city go back on the promise he made in March 2018, that if that, the great streets, Venice Boulevard, is made permanent, there will be an environmental assessment and an accompanying public process? There hasn't been. You city council members work for the citizens of this city. Don't forget that. Support the community, grant the...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Selena Inouye with the West Side Los Angeles Neighbors Network. I'm here because I wanted to bring up just a issue regarding getting letters sent from the community attached to a council file. Currently, 173 letters have been sent to the Transportation Committee, and 144 letters have been sent to the City Council regarding item number 23. The last time I looked on the council file, many of those, most of those letters do not appear. So is there something we can do to make sure that those letters get on that council file and that that input from the community is seen by the council? I hope that someone from maybe the city clerk's office can come talk to me about this issue, please?
We will look into that. Next speaker.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Fannie Guzman with Latinos for Cannabis, and I am here to speak truth to. I am here representing our disenfranchised communities...
Okay, wait one second, hold her time. Guys, don't disrupt the meeting, please. Go ahead.
I am here to represent our disenfranchised communities and ask that Phase Three is not a, you don't move forward with Phase Three until moving, completely implementing Phase Two. You have a collective responsibility to our communities to implement and see the program through. Social equity, you cannot kill social equity by going into Phase Three unprepared. There is just too much, too much predatory things going on, and there is no checks and balances, there is no funding. How can we move into Phase Three and call that responsibility? We are looking to you as people that look like us. We are looking to you as people that look like us, especially Latino leaders. I am looking to you for help. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, my name is Lynn Lyman. I'm an advocate for social equity in cannabis. I wanted to speak about what happened this morning in a very rushed process in the Rules Committee, with no discussion amongst the committee members. They approved an amendment to begin Phase Three immediately. As you heard from the previous speaker, the city has yet, has yet to invest in social equity. There is no money on the table. It's been two years. This thing is a farce. I hear the talk, "Council President, you sound good when you talk," but the action has not backed it up, and I do not understand why this council is rushing after two weeks ago, the president and the DCR, Executive Director, invited us in and said, "Help us craft Phase Three, so that it will be truly equitable." And then in the dead of the night, they rushed an amendment through. We tried to get here this morning to speak to it, you cut off public comment, and there was no discussion. I'm voting the full council to vote no on moving Phase Three forward at this time.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Gabriel Guzman. I am here speaking on behalf of Latinos for Cannabis. And I'd like to echo the concerns of my colleagues here, and my great disappointment to see what has taken place today. The committee meeting this morning really showed that there is little to no respect to the community members to, to find out what are the real issues that are going on in the social equity program. How can we discuss moving forward with Phase Three when we haven't even finalized Phase Two? I'm getting tired of hearing the rhetoric on the importance of social equity, but yet nothing is being done to fund this program. These corporations, these capitalists are moving into our communities. Do they care about reinvesting into our communities? And what are you guys gonna do to assure that? Again, I am tired of the rhetoric. I understand you guys have a lot on your plate, but in order for us to see this social equity be successful, we need to see it as it being something of, of, of great importance and of need. Thank you for your time, and I'm asking to vote no.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wright? Daniel, are you ready?
And, and members, we're continuing with the fair hea- hearing, so this is the time you should give heightened attention to the speaker. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, council members. Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm, on behalf of Sunset Landmark. We are here today, in case you didn't know, because it was barely announced, regarding the Selma-Wilcox Hotel, which is at the intersection of Selma Avenue and Wilcox in Hollywood. This particular project is one of a series of, for lack of a better term, noisy nuisance-making rooftop nightclub party hotels that are be, all being developed by the same developer, relevant group, in this area. That includes the existing Dream Hotel, which has already been identified by community members as creating so much noise that they cannot sleep, and other projects nearby. In this particular case, one of the principal issues in the case involves piecemealing. The developer in this case applied for ministerial permits initially for the development of the Tao Restaurant and an underground parking garage. Actually, they initially called it storage, which no one was buying even at the city. And then, after getting this building under construction and getting the restaurant opened, and that application for those permits were by an entity called the Selma-Wilcox Hotel LLC, but the applicant name didn't match the request, which was just for initially a hotel, I'm sorry, a restaurant and a parking garage. And then, sure enough, as predicted by Hollywood Heritage and other community activists, and as documented in the record by activists who showed that, at the same time that this was going on, the developer was soliciting funding from investors in the H1, H5 program for foreign investment, investors. They were seeking and showing on their own brochures a hotel here. And then, that came true. They later applied for a discretionary permit in order to develop the hotel and to remove the one-story retail that was originally associated with the By Right Project. SEQA says that piecemealing is not permissible and that you should be ordering an evaluation of all of the project. This was a deliberate effort by the developer to get the project under construction. As Planning Commissioner, Ms. Deke, can't remember her last name, but you know who I'm talking about, she said at the Planning Commission that she could see why they applied for the By Right Ministerial Permit to get it started, and it made her not believe anything they had to say. Then she shrugged her shoulders and went ahead and approved the project. And I guess that's what we'll probably see here today, is the council will shrug its shoulders and say, "Well, gosh, too bad about that piecemealing. Too bad we were suckered by the developer in getting its way." But this developer and the overall impact of cumulative impacts of noise, parking, traffic, greenhouse gases, all of those are documented in the file, which I hope that some of you have read, although the record is devoid of any evidence that any of you have read our appeal materials. I also want to point out noise. Our expert put into the record recently, analysis that pointed out that the city's noise analysis here had refused to analyze the impact on adjoining hotels. Hotels are considered under your guidelines as a sensitive receptor of noise, and the documentation circulated to the public in the form of this MND does not analyze the impacts on adjoining hotels, including hotels owned by this relevant group developer. So, as a result, the noise impacts have been understated in your, in the document that was circulated by the city. When our consultant pointed that, this out, the city's only response was, "Well, hotels are quote, generally not considered sensitive receptors." That's inconsistent with your own regulations. So, for this, the piecemealing, what you should be doing is ordering a full EIR on all of these hotels together. Right here, right now, is the time to do that. Show some backbone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. City Attorney?
So, I'd just like to confirm, are any of the other interested parties, property owner, appellate, appellee here? Okay, in that case, we close the fair hearing. I believe we still have public comment on it, but that's just normal public comment.
Okay, so I think we want, no, 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 no.
Were you an appellate, a law, in the same side as Mr., as Mr. Wright's firm, Silverstein firm?
Mr. City Attorney?
How long, much more time do you need to speak?
Go ahead.
So, as Mr. Wright pointed out, there, there aren't other appellants here. We did not know this item was going to be, be called in this way. And, and while the hearing is very necessary, it is very crucial for the city council to be fully aware of the scope of this project, and that the developer of this project has played games with the city and played games with the public, and totally undermined the purpose of SEQA, totally undermined the regulation and land use authority of this city and the people who have vested you with that power. Councilman O'Farrell has been very supportive of this. I hope that now that the council is aware that this is going on, that you can take the right action, which is to demand a full environmental impact report that will study all of the cumulative impacts of this massive, massive project. Again, three, over 350,000 square feet, over 700 hotel rooms, a dozen bars, event spaces, it's huge. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freo, Alfred, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if you could come up and quickly explain to us, just hold his time for a minute, explain to us who you represent, Mr. City Attorney. And you're here, Alfred, you are.
Alfred Freo, Council President, I represent the applicant for the project before you today.
All right.
So, my comments will be brief. This project and item has been the subject of numerous public hearings already, including our hearing officer hearing. The appellants had an opportunity to present their claims there. The objectives were resoundly rejected on the back, on the fact that they were meritless and without any substantial evidence presented that would justify a new environmental review process for the project. The project has been thoroughly reviewed pursuant to a mitigated negative declaration that has been prepared by the city. The city has also submitted a series of responses and correspondence, most recently on February 22nd, as well as correspondence before you dated March 5th. The appellants raised two new arguments that primarily concern a due process argument related to the way that the city has processed letters that were submitted by our office on behalf of the applicant as well as by the appellants. Those letters were handled in accordance with the rules that are set forth for all projects before this body and adequately addressed by staff, as will be presented momentarily. The applicant, the applicants have been granted adequate time to review and respond to the information provided by staff in our office. And as I mentioned, no new information has been presented that would merit any, anything other than a approval of the project this morning by this body. There is also information that was presented by our office and coordination with our technical consultants around two key issues that were raised by the appellants. The first concerns a segmentation issue, as was mentioned previously, this project is, before you is for the development of a single project, the continuation of a restaurant, and the development of a new restaurant as well as a hotel and underground parking. That's all that's being approved today. Other projects that have been referenced, that have been proposed or considered, are not the matter before you. Those projects are either under construction or in operation. There is no legal basis under SEQA to argue the segmentation, although they vehemently have indicated that. And again, as I've mentioned, there has been plenty of opportunity for both the hearing officer, the Planning Commission that recommended approval, as well as Plum, to have considered those arguments, and they have been rejected. To close, I would like to just reiterate that our request is to have the city council approve Plum Committee's recommendation and deny the appeals before you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I get Ted Jimenez, Alfredo Hernandez, Gilbert Smith? Welcome.
My name is President, City Council. I'm Ted Jimenez, I'm with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. The project requires preparation for an EIR. The city must prepare a full environmental impact report, since the fair agreement exists that the proposed project may have a significant environmental impact. The city impermissibly advances two district baselines in violation of SEQA. To use the baseline of mitigated negative declaration in misleading, confusing, and thwarts information goals of SEQA, the baseline should be the physical conditions actually existing in the time of analysis. The MND falls to adequately analyze cumulative impacts. So, SEQA requires preparation of that EIR, and the city fails adequately to discuss the cumulative traffic, greenhouse gases, and the quality of noise. The MND provides inadequate mitigation of traffic impacts and analyzes the indefensible because the city has not adopted significant-
Thank you. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Yes, good morning, council members and staff. I'm Gilbert Smith, and I am the Chair of the Ricardo Montalvo Foundation, owner, operator of the Ricardo Montalvo Theater on Vine Street. It's amazing, I've been at this for 12 years now, and when I came to Hollywood, it was asphalt and with a lot of promises. We're in the middle of a revolution right now, and the Selma-Wilcox Hotel is one of those promises that are being kept. We have nearly 80,000 people coming to my theater now annually. We have plans to go over 100,000, and we need to have people from walking distances who visit Hollywood to be able to stay and to stay at night, and not just drive to and from other places in Southern California necessarily. So, I really adore Grant King and Richard for their work in the Selma corridor, and I appreciate your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could get Jacob? Jacob, I don't want to butcher your last name, and you'll be followed by Mr. Previn. Yes, sir?
Good morning, council members. My name is Alfredo Hernandez, Chair of the Urban Policy Committee of the Hollywood Network Coalition, a broad-based coalition of businesses, residents, nonprofits, and educational institutions. Our committee and board voted unanimously, unanimously to support this project. The proposed project provides a high-quality hotel with a design that showcases all that is special about Hollywood, the life, the city, and the views. The applicants have created a hospitality corridor in and around Selma Avenue that has boosted the local economy while providing hundreds of local jobs. People love coming to and staying in Hollywood again. The success of their dream hotel and the Tao Group's restaurants is a testament to their knowledge of what is needed and how to make it work. I respectfully request that you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Jacob, followed by Mr. Eric Previn.
Hi, my name is Jacob Howdige. I'm the Business and Economic Development Manager at the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, I'm here to express the support for this proposed Selma-Wilcox project. The chamber believes this project will help to revitalize the area of Wilcox and bring much-needed hotel rooms to one of the most visited parts of Los Angeles. We are particularly pleased with the project's pedestrian-friendly design elements and outdoor dining options. We believe this project will go a long way in tor, um, long way towards contributing to the walkability of the neighborhood. The project is well-served by transit, increasing its accessibility for residents and tourists alike. The Hollywood Chamber is proud to support the Wilcox project and asks that you move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Previn?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I take note that noisy rooftop activity does not rise to the level of your concerns. I mean, we had a similar project in CD2 where lots of impacts were being felt from a hotel nearby residence, and they came down to fight, and just like these people testified, they felt they weren't given due process, and they felt like their rights were blocked by this hurry-up approach to get this through. Mr. O'Farrell has been diligent, I will give you that. He has been extremely diligent at fighting at any expense to encroach on where people live in Hollywood, because he has a vision about a nightclub. But I do think that we have to address the concerns of the local. We took our cases, you know, to the Superior Court where it was, just like you're about to do, shoved out the door, and then shoved out the door a second time, and then it went to the appellate court, and we won, as you know, and you violated the Brown Act. So, I would just suggest that you consider long and hard the nature of these fair hearings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Last card, Ms. Graham, is there Candace Graham? This is on item three. Yes, ma'am, on item three.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me here. Thank you, guys, for being diligent in your pursuit of quality for the city of Los Angeles. It's always a pleasure. Pertaining to item number three, growth is essential in the city of Los Angeles. Housing or short-term or any type of housing is very desperately needed. Bill Hui and myself, we told you before the housing crisis, because we have our finger on the pulse that there is a problem. And sometimes, as a whole, I'm just for this. And, you know, I'll be meeting all of you guys, but I am for anything that brings housing, that brings short-term, long-term. We need the, not only the residual profits, but we need to work as a whole, and you guys have been doing a wonderful job. My name is Candace Graham.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment on this issue. I would, I believe we're prepared to vote on Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would actually like to bring up the Planning Department to just answer a few questions. And, and we have, I understand, May Suri Napong Sagon? Did I get your name right? Thank you. Thank you so much. If you could just give a brief overview of the project, that would be terrific. I have a few questions for clarification.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good member, council members. Again, my name is Mae Sirinap Wong Sagan, planning staff for the item that's before you today. I'll give you a brief overview as well as some of the issues that we have already thoroughly discussed before our City Planning Commission and before the Plum Committee, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. So again, this is for a proposed hotel referred to as the Selma Wilcox Hotel and Restaurant, generally located at 6421 West Selma Avenue in the Hollywood Community Plan area. The items that are before you are vesting zone change and height district change to TQC 2-2D, and then four appeals that were filed on the approval from the City Planning Commission. This item was properly noticed before the Planning and Land Use Management Committee on November 27, 2018, at which I presented the project as well as the appeal points and the department's response to those appeals. Those appeal points that I addressed at Plum, which I would be happy to elaborate if you have any questions on regarding the CEQA piecemealing of the project with other hotels in the area as well, inadequate CEQA analysis and mitigation measures, challenges to the validity of the change, the delimitations in calculation of guest room density, noise concerns regarding the use of the rooftop, and oversaturation of alcohol and safety concerns. After consideration of Planning Staff's presentation as well as public testimony that included those from the appellant's and applicants, the Plum Committee voted to recommend adoption of the MND and the vesting zone change and height district change, and to modify one condition of approval related to alcohol sales and to deny the appeals. This item was originally scheduled for last week's meeting on February 26, 2019. However, it was continued in order to properly take into consideration comments that were received prior to the council meeting. Although legally not required, although the legally required public hearing has already been held, the department wanted to take the opportunity to address the comments that were raised prior to council taking action on the item. I've submitted a letter to the file dated March 5, 2019, which addresses three comments that I would like to address at this time. The first one's in regards to allegations regarding the appellant's due process and fair hearing rights. As explained in my letter, the city did not violate the appellant's due process and fair hearing rights in that the public hearings for this item have properly been noticed in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code, and the public hearing was properly held before the Plum Committee. Additionally, the city continued the item for one week for council's consideration to allow adequate time to review the new comments submitted to the record even though it's not legally required to. The second comment is in regards to the inadequacy of the MND. The comments raised in regards to the adequacy of the MND have been raised at previous hearings and have previously been addressed by Planning Staff before the City Planning Commission and before the Plum Committee. The administrative record provides evidence that the MND was adequately prepared and addresses all the CEQA issues raised by the public, including the allegations of piecemealing for the project itself as well as projects proposed in the vicinity. Both the Plum Committee and CPC found that MND was adequately prepared and addresses these issues raised by the public. The third comment I would like to address is in regards to approval of the CUB. The comment alleges that in approving the CUB, the CPC did not consider substantial evidence in the record. The administrative record provides evidence that the approval of the CUB did consider all information in the record and that the approval included more restrictive operating conditions, including those recommended and supported by LAPD themselves. In conclusion, I would like to recommend that City Council adopt Plum's recommendation in approving the project and denying the appeal, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mae. You covered most of what I had, but could you just elaborate on the claims by the appellant's of the piecemealing? If you could just elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. There's two, again, this is made from planning, there's two claims regarding piecemealing. One is of the development of the project itself in conjunction, in consideration of the Tao Restaurant, that's currently there, and the parking structure, and then the proposed hotel. I would like to clarify for the record that the permits for the parking structure were not permitted as just storage. They did identify that once the structure was completed that it would be a parking structure. So that is clearly in the building and safety permit records. In order to address these allegations and concerns about piecemealing, the MND that we prepared for this project, that is before you today, does analyze the project's potential impacts from two different baselines as allowed by CEQA. It takes a conservative approach in analyzing the project's potential impacts from what we normally do, which is what exists today, and from what the environment was prior to any permits being issued for the Tao Restaurant. In both scenarios, the MND comes to the conclusion that all potential impacts could be mitigated, and those mitigation measures have been incorporated into the conditions that are before you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mae. And thank you, Mr. President. That answers all the questions that I had.
Okay, let's prepare to vote then. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 23, today's item. Mr. Bonin.
Yes, Mr. Bonin.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the clerk. I'd like to continue item 23 until Friday. There was concern raised that some of the public comment letters are not in the council file. I'm not sure if they're not in the file or if they just haven't been uploaded, and an abundance of caution to make sure that the community is heard. Happy to continue until Friday so we can make sure that everything that's supposed to be in the file is in the file before the council votes.
Okay, so we have that, Madam Clerk.
Yes, and Friday is March 8.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
And I believe after we've heard all the comments today, we'll close the public comment on the item, even though items will go in the file. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, the request is to continue the item to March 8.
Okay, where is Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, if you'd come up, we'll give you your general public comment, and also you can speak on item two, so please come forward. And we'll continue the, Mr. Bonin's request without objection. Yes, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I noticed that today is Taco Tuesday or Alcohol, Public Necessity and Convenience Day. So, you know, we are facing, I was just at the county, escalated motor vehicle traffic liability at.
So, Mr. Previn, you're on item two.
Item two? I'm on item 26, 27.
No, a bunch of items were voted on before you even arrived.
Oh, so this is not my usual multi-speaker time?
No, Mr. Previn, you have item two, and then your general public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, item two is, sorry about that. Could you restore my time, please?
No, Mr. Previn.
Oh, okay, fine. Item two is, oh, right, this is the Affordable Housing Project at 5130 Broadway. Thank you, sir. This is another public hearing, and I was noticing during the last fair public hearing, Coretz was engaged in a dialogue with his first deputy, which to me is the exact kind of caution that Faubel made, which is all eyes on the recognized speaker or the monitor in front of them. You wouldn't know the recognized speaker because I'm unrecognizable. General public comment, exactly.
Let's give him his one minute.
Sir, I want to thank Westall. Boy, he was fighting hard out there today as the cannabis crew surrounded him and wanted to talk with him about what the heck is going on, I think. I don't know, I was just an observer. I did notice some friends from the past. But I will say, Westall, he's under a lot of pressure, sir. I approached him the other day and said, "Sir, good work at sticking a few paper meeting agendas out every day now, but could you just put it in writing so that we know that it's happening?" And his refusal has landed like a anvil on Bloomingfield's toe. We need to hear that you are not going to be engaging in that worst practice. Over and over again, you did it since January 1, and when I show up, because I'm focused on it, you act better, but that's not what we're after. It's not me. I know where to find them. It's the remaining 4 million residents who come to observe your behavior and scrutinize the work that's being done here. So please, sir, put the paper meeting agendas out and jot a little note, or have the mayor jot a little note, or the clerk, whoever you like, Ms. Poulst, I'll take it from any city official, but let's get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, on item two, let's open the roll, close.
Mr. President, an amending motion has been distributed and posted for item two.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's now go to item number eight, Jess McBride. Jess McBride, item eight.
Is it one minute? Okay. Good morning, I'm Jess McBride. I'm with Alchemy Planning, and we represent the Sardine, a new coffee shop, lounge, and performance venue located at 1101 South Pacific Avenue in Central San Pedro. I'm going to amend this. The project received approval for a conditional use permit from the Department of City Planning, allowing for a full line of alcohol, live entertainment, and incidental dancing. During that process, the applicants found tremendous support among the community, including the local Chamber of Commerce and both the Central and Northwest Neighborhood Councils. The project has received over 140 letters of support from neighbors who are thrilled to see this kind of establishment on Pacific Avenue. Given the overwhelming community support and thoughtful work that the owners have put into making this project a reality, we respectfully request that you determine the Sardine is indeed convenient and necessary for the public of San Pedro. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Buscayena.
I too want to echo the comments just made before us on the excitement of the Sardine coming to the downtown San Pedro area in light of the $150 million investment of the San Pedro Public Market, about 1,000 housing units being built along the waterfront. We are seeing a renaissance continue to take shape in the downtown San Pedro area. So we're excited about these types of establishments coming forward, retail, dining, entertainment, and want to thank all those involved in support and my team to get to this point. So I ask for your support, colleagues, and your eye vote. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, let's vote on item 28. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson?
Have item number 28 go urgent forthwith.
Then let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Kokorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. On item 14, I'd like to move that the council adopt 14B, please.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now, Mr. Harris Dawson, let's actually vote on the urgent forthwith part on your item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to call for one minute general public comment, Zarian Hadley, Mauro Melgar, Arturo, I think Flores, Bonita Money. Please come forward. Yes, identify yourself, sir.
Hello, my name is Mauro Melgar. I'm a business owner in the city of Sun Valley. In order to operate, I must comply with paying the city and state, and I've been in business for over 10 years. Just like I've been in, just like I've been good to the city and state, I would like for the city and state to be good to me. I'm here, I'm here to demand social equity for those affected by prohibition like myself. 10 years ago, I went to jail for selling marijuana. I received a felony, and now you guys want to issue permits and licenses without helping the people. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ross, if you're here.
Hello, council. Again, I'm Bonita.
What's your name?
My name is Bonita Money. I'm the founder of the.
Oh, there you are. Yes, I saw you this morning.
Hi, how are you, her?
Give her back her time.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm the founder of the National Diversity and Inclusion Cannabis Alliance. I work with a lot of the social equity applicants, and we are your constituents. Through our collaborative efforts, we have been able to get over 10,000 of your constituents to register as voters. Moving forward the right way with the social equity plan is crucial to our communities. Do you know that your communities are being preyed upon by predatory white investors who have no interest in contributing to our communities? And the problem with this is that this is all pure greed. By voting, yes, you will take away the real social equity plan as it was designed, and it will, and this will be nothing but sharecropping. So these investors are going to stack licenses and make sure people of color do not have true ownership. And you have opened the door for this by this new ordinance, C 104.20I, which allows these investors to buy the social equity applicants out in three years? That's ridiculous. That's taking away from what this plan was really designed for. How can you have real social equity when you are allowing these white investors to buy them out?
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And then if we have Kirsten Lovell, Jorge Nuno, Felicia Carbajal, Sarah Forlong. Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Weston, I met with you about four years ago before the ordinance even passed, and I was telling you about how frustrated I was in our community of us not having any ownership of marijuana dispensaries. I don't know if you remember that, but I've called your office about 80 times since and haven't been able to get a meeting with anybody. I'm an advocate, member of the community. I go around helping young people try to stay out of trouble, and we feel that without having social equity in our community where this money doesn't channel back into our community, where there's some way that we can be assured that this is going to happen, I think is a travesty to our community. Right now, I still stay in south central Los Angeles, and I'll probably be staying there for the rest of my life. It's very important that this thing is vetted out, that these predators who have, as one guy told me, he has 300 applications already prepared to go.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning. I'm Kristen Lovell, and earlier today, the committee moved to vote, or moved the vote forward on some cannabis recommendations that basically kill social equity for our communities. We must fund the social equity program prior to moving forward haphazardly. We must provide the technical and business assistance as promised. We must prevent poverty pimps and protect our applicants from predatory business practices. We must mandate and enforce corporate social responsibility. How can you award new licenses when current license holders are not breaking bread with organizations in the community doing the work of repair? We, without a fully funded social equity program and a mandated commitment to corporate social responsibility, our communities will suffer. And this plan has potential, but it will fail the most marginalized of our people. Vote no on Friday. Please vote no.
Thank you. Felicia?
Hi, it's been a long day for me. My name is Felicia Carbajal. I'm a cannabis community organizer, and I don't want a license here in the city of Los Angeles. I joined this convo because as a queer Latinx person impacted by the justice system, working at the intersections of health, gender, racial, economic, environmental, and social justice, I knew I had a responsibility, just like I know all of you do too. The recommendation adopted by the Rules Committee this AM regarding cannabis regulations, social equity, and the rollout of licenses will kill the vision and spirit of our city to create a socially equitable cannabis program that reinvests into Black and Brown communities. We need funding. I have stopped by every single one of your offices and dropped off a letter from a coalition of us. I am the person who has knocked on every single door and has asked you guys to meet. I'm still waiting to meet with every single one of you. Communities of color disproportionately impacted need this community reinvestment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is.
Pull it down so we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Sarah Forlong, and I live in Mar Vista, and I came here today to talk about item 22, and I just wanted to make a public comment because it's been shelved till Friday, that I spent an hour and 20 minutes on the bus, took off the day, and I'm not available on Friday. So this, this is really unfortunate, and I just wanted to state my point of view on this.
Thank you. Okay, so did we have Zarian Hadley, Arturo? Okay, so did we have Zarian Hadley, Arturo, Jorge Nuno? Okay, that concludes general public comment. What is before this body at this time, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members, announcements? I hear no announcements. Let us rise for adjourning motions. Okay, I am looking to my left side, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of a Los Angeles icon, former Dodger pitching great Don Newcombe, who died at age 92 last Tuesday after a lengthy battle with cancer. Don was one of the premier pitchers in baseball history and was one among the franchise's last links to its Brooklyn roots. He came up shortly after Jackie Robinson helped blaze a path for other African-American ballplayers, and consequently, he had to endure a lot of hatred and abuse as well. He said that at times when he was warming up at the Dodger, in the Dodger bullpen, he had to be surrounded by security due to death threats. He always said that some of the best advice he got from Robinson was, in his mindset, to change one letter and one word, replacing the I in the word bitter with an E to spell better. Robinson said they should fight to be better, not bitter. That was Don Newcombe, better than the hate he endured as one of baseball's first African-American ballplayers, better than his personal demons that he fought with, with alcoholism, and better than a life of 92 years lived with unrelenting toughness and uncommon dignity. He often credited his wife with saving his life and helping him to get through his struggles, but he also took that strength and paid it forward. In fact, Newcombe helped formalize the first substance abuse program tailored specifically for major league players. Up until his final years, Newcombe annually traveled from his home in Sherman Oaks to the Dodger spring training camp to tell players about the dangers of alcohol abuse. He sat with players who struggled with addiction, as he had, and advised them. Despite of his toughness, Don was also a man with a sense of humor. During one game in Chicago where the cat calls got really bad, Jackie Robinson went out to the mound to tell Newcombe, "If the ball slips out of your hands sometimes and goes under a batter's chin, don't worry about it, because they're always throwing at me and they don't feel bad about it." So, Don proceeded to knock down the next seven batters before being ejected. When the umpires came to throw him out, he said, "You can't throw me out until I get the other two." These and many of his other humorous stories were always tinged with a bit of sadness. Of note, Newcombe was the first African-American pitcher to start a World Series game, the first African-American pitcher to win 20 games, the first player of any ethnicity to win Rookie of the Year, Cy Young, and MVP awards, an accomplishment only matched by one other player in the history of the game, and he was one of the four African-Americans to integrate the All-Star Game in 1949. President Barack Obama called Newcombe "someone who helped Major League Baseball become what it is, but also helped America become what it is." He then went on to say that, "I would not be here if it weren't for Jackie and if it were not for Don Newcombe." Don was an ambassador for the Dodgers until very late in life, and even as the years slipped by and his memory was fading and his steps were slower, Don would show up three hours before every Dodger home game and sit behind home plate. His message was always love, love for the Dodgers, love for baseball, love for the city of Los Angeles, and he will be greatly, greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. I'd like to be a signature on that with you. Don Newcombe was also a motivational speaker and was here in this building on numerous occasions. I know the last time he was here, and I don't know if we honored him, or he was just part of Dodger Day or what have you. He signed autographs. I actually have a Dodger hat that he signed up in the office. He was a class act, and he was really, Mr. Coretts, you're correct, hilarious, that is for sure. He will be missed. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Ralston. He was a faithful member of the Wings Over Wendy's group, which is a veterans' group. He died of a heart attack at the ripe age of 97 at his home in Tarzana on the 21st of this month. He was, Jack was a native of California who worked at Volte Aircraft in Downing after graduating from high school early, attending community college, and then entering the Colorado School of Mines. While enlisted, he then actually transferred to Harvard University, and while he was at Harvard, he enlisted in the US Army in 1942. He wanted to fight in, for this country, and the Army let him continue at Harvard before training him with the 26th Yankee Division at Camp AP Hill in Virginia, and then Fort Gordon, where he was transported directly to Utah Beach in September of 1944 as a replacement for the original Normandy invasion units. With his training as a mining engineer, he was asked by his CO to evaluate structures that the Army camped in. A favorite place of his, he talked about, was the wine cellars in France. He would test the safety of the structures, and I imagine he would sample the bouquet of the wines as well. And he fought his way across Europe, being wounded with shrapnel in his back during the Battle of the Bulge. Later on, he married his community college sweetheart, Myra Ville, in 1945, and with his new bride, they returned to Harvard. He got his degree, then he attended graduate school at Stanford, and then joined the Morrison-Knutson Corporation building, the Dalai Dam in Kandahar, in the Kandahar province of Afghanistan. So, he was pretty worldly. After the dam was completed, he came back to California. He joined the California Department of Transportation in the early 50s. Then they wanted to transfer him to Berkeley, so instead, he joined the Army Corps of Engineers to be back in Southern California. He left the Corps years later to go into business as a soil and foundation engineer, and he did the engineering on the construction of the very first McDonald's in the area, in the valley. In February of 1970, he helped form the Soil and Foundation Engineers Association. He served as their first president, helping advance issues, legislative issues regarding to the profession and private practice of geotechnical engineering. He also formed several geotechnically engineering consulting companies before retiring to his home in Tarzana. He led a long, productive, and full life. He was a regular at Wings Over Wendy's, and they really miss him there. They talk about his quiet smile and sense of humor. He will be missed by his family and by his fellow veteran comrade in arms. Thank you. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. I'm now moving to the, my right, Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's with sadness that I ask that the council adjourn this meeting in memory of a longtime member of City Hall staff, a great public servant, and a great Angelino, Dale Thrush, who many of you who have been around here for a while will well remember. Dale was an extremely dedicated individual and planner who was very much committed to serving the people of the entire San Fernando Valley, and especially those in Council District Two. He served three council members on the staff of Council District Two. He was a planning deputy for Joel Wax, for Councilmember Wendy Gruehl, and then for myself when I started in the council as well. And he was that kind of wise, senior advisor that every new council member hopes to be able to have, to kind of get you used to this building, to let you know what you don't know, and to help you through those beginning years. I remember when I was running for council, Dale played such an important role in land use matters in my district that he would come up as a topic in town halls. People actually wanted to know before they'd decide whether to support me or not whether I was going to keep Dale on staff, and sometimes in a positive way, sometimes in a not positive way, but that's a sign of how important Dale was to this community. He received his bachelor's degree in architecture and a master's in urban design from the University of Southern California, and then he went on to complete a JD at Loyola Law School. He really was a masterful planner, a masterful mediator with the community on planning and land use issues and bringing together diverse concerns, diverse communities, bringing together stakeholders and engaging them in the future of our communities. He also served on the board of LA Family Housing, and then from the time of his retirement with the city until the date of his passing, Dale had his own consulting firm, Dale Thrush and Associates. My thoughts and prayers go out to his, of course, to his wife Barbara, to his sister-in-law Pat Davenport, who many of you know, and all of us in CD2 who had the pleasure to be able to work with Dale Thrush. May he rest in peace.
Well said. Any other adjourning motions on my right side? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.